So the lights stopped flashing, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, we need to call the roll, Kelly.
Tom?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
John Rusby?
Here.
Al?
Here.
Christine?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Jacinda Citra?
Here.
Freddie?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
So Board, we're going to make one change to the agenda tonight. We'll change the order on items C and D. So we'll do the Wilson Road before we do Sun Path. And I believe that item E is off the agenda for tonight. It's table.
If you don't speak into the mic, folks on the YouTube can't hear you.
So we're gonna, going to switch the order of item C and D tonight. And unless there's somebody here for 430 Peruville Road, we'll table that. Passing around the, yeah, the training. So just make a note of how many hours you have left. Alright, so our first project tonight is 130 Esbury Road. Mr. Christopher, you wanna come up?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Oh, my God, can I have a second?
I'm sorry, what?
Which item got canceled, Ted. It's not on the agenda. It's only that they're not.
What's not on the agenda?
What's not on the agenda would be 430 Peruville Road, Contractor Yard.
Thank you. I think that's what you're here for.
Okay. Okay, so this is a minor subdivision. You wanna run us through this again?
Yes, right now I got four acres. What I wanna do is put two acres in the back and two acres in the front. And then where it says the shed, on the right-hand side in the back, I wanna turn it into a house.
Okay.
And then sell the property out the front.
So is that no longer going to be a commercial operation?
It won't be in the middle. It's, I'm kinda semi-retired now, and I pick and choose what I wanna do. Uh, when the shed is done, I have a bucket truck, and I will end up selling that. And I don't wanna climb on ladders anymore, and I have to. Uh, and my house type also has her sewing room and stuff in there.
What was that? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
My wife has a sewing, uh...
Sewing room?
Yes. So I'm really done with that. But still, I have clients that don't have the capability of doing sewn results. So I feel for them, I'm still in business to help them out, especially in the NIA department. That made people do NIA paperwork.
So, Tom, you're talking about Ruth's letter. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So we, we need clarification on that. John's not here, correct? What would you say?
Well, I, I would like clarification. Uh, if it's sewn residential and you have a commercial business.
Is it R1 or R2? Do we know?
R1.
Say Sandy, R1.
Isn't it R1?
Yes, it's R1.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Did, did you come in and talk with John at the planning, or Mason with planning?
Mason.
Mason. And Mason said what you were proposing was legal? Is, did Mason said that?
Yeah, we talked, we talked to the girl who, I can't get her name. This is Jen.
Heather?
Who?
Heather?
Heather, yes. And Heather's the one that gave me the paper saying that I could do it. You know, 'cause I ran it through her first, and then Mason did it after Heather.
And they all said everything, what you're proposing was legal with the town's rules, regulations, standards, whatever.
Yeah.
So...
And then, the other guy, Mason's thought, I was wondering if you can get a fire truck down the road. But I have a sixty-foot-high bucket truck. It goes up and down the road when needed to be. So there's plenty of access for a fire department truck.
Did that come up, Dean, in your discussion? Well, this contract, you didn't do any of that, huh?
Nope. Nope, John didn't. When I spoke to John before he left town, he didn't raise any red flags on this whatsoever.
So what Ruth was saying, it may not be appropriate or have that merit today, possibly.
John, I, I live across the street and also have an interest in this.
Well, we're gonna get to a public hearing.
Yeah, we'll open it up. You can speak. We'll give it to you in a second.
Yeah. Board, any other questions before we...
So this was, this was being run before you even, this was being run as a business before you even came here to talk about the subdivision, correct?
Wait, wait, any other...
So you were already having the shop and you were in business?
Yes, the shop's been there since maybe seven.
Okay.
And the sign went in around the same time? Is that correct?
So... Close open, opening up the public comment? Hang your second.
I have one question.
Okay, go ahead, John.
As is, if you didn't subdivide it...
Could you speak up, John?
If you didn't subdivide it, as is Craig's living there with a shop and a sign, and if he did subdivide it, nothing's, nothing's really changing on the, on his smaller two acres. It's still, nothing's, everything's staying the same?
Yeah, everything's the same, though. Everything is, well, right, put down a fence in front of it, so you don't see the house. 'Cause you're probably making my wife sick, especially while you're following...
So it's not like an increase. It's still a business, was a business, still a residence, was a residence.
Right.
So the conversion of the shed and potentially putting up a fence, are really the only changes that you're, you're after?
That is correct. The shed up into the house.
Okay.
So there's no plans to sell the business? And you're gonna stay, you're gonna stay living there?
Yes. We, we usually go down south when we're done.
Yeah. All right, any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'm looking for a second to open the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so who would like to speak on this? You'd like to speak? Why don't you come right up to the table, please? And let us know what your name is and where you live.
Uh, my name is Caroline Rasmussen, and I live at 127 Esbury Road. And we also own the house next door, 131 Esbury Road. Both houses are directly across from Mr. Christopher's property. As was discussed, the, he has a home business. Originally, when we moved in, Mr. Christopher's father had the sign business in downtown Ithaca. And then when he retired, it passed to Mr. Christopher, Craig Christopher. And that's when the home, uh, business was established. And the sign was put up many years later. The sign is in the front of the house on Esbury Road. It's not in the back where the big building is. There's a, um, a large standalone barn that's part of the home business. And this was classified as a warehouse by the tax assessor. It's, and according to the tax records, it's eighteen hundred square feet. And that was used for the sign construction. So my concern is not so much, you know, Mr. Christopher dividing the house and building a, a house in the back and so forth. My concern is when Mr. Christopher leaves the property, or in the future, that this business would continue, this business designation would continue, and we'd have, you know, trucks in the sign, and somebody would have carte blanche to have a, a business, a sign business, or any other kind of business, in our one residential area. And when, you know, Mr. Christopher's business was going well before he retired, the sign was blanking, the sign was on, people, trucks were coming and going, at, you know, regular pace, and big trucks. And that didn't feel very residential. And certainly would decrease the property of, of our houses. And so I'm not so concerned about, you know, what he, he's doing today. I'm concerned down the road, is this grandfathered in, that we're gonna have business in, at our one designation? And I think we have to put some guardrails in this stipulation of how this property will go forward. Either the sign, or maybe both of these things, that it will, the business designation would go away, maybe on the sale of the property, or something like that. I, I trust Mr. Christopher not to, you know, carry on a heavy-duty business, just like he said he doesn't wanna climb on ladders. I get it. But when this, this land is sold, and eventually will be, you know, I don't want this grandfathered in to make our property worse. And so if there could be some kind of guardrails on the subdivision like that, and also if there, it's not a business, then the sign should come down. 'Cause somebody could just turn that sign back on tomorrow. Mr. Christopher has not had the sign on for many years, and we appreciate that, but that doesn't, the sign still stands. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Well, the problem is that, that some representative from the town planning, who would know whether it's grandfathered in or not, is not here tonight, unfortunately. And I don't think we, anyone here on the, does anyone on the boardroom know if it's grandfathered in at all? I'm sorry, Dean, I didn't even tell you.
No, go ahead.
So I don't think we can give you an answer either way tonight, unfortunately.
Well, will this come up again?
Yeah. Unless, unless the board votes to approve it tonight, but I think that some of us...
You do my letter.
I think some of us have that question.
And, uh, I will come back if I get you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry!
Uh, that's it. You're done.
So what do you think is...
Pass this down to Kelly, please.
Do you think, Dean, we should hold off on approvals on this, or would...
Well, I would. I think that that's an important question.
I don't really understand whether it's a non-conforming use or not. It sounds like it is.
It does sound like it is.
And generally, and generally, non-conforming uses don't transfer, but I'd like to really get an assurance of that.
Yeah. It doesn't sound like, you know, that Mr. Christopher's intent is to sell it as an ongoing business, but I think we need to be sure. So it's my opinion. Board, do you need...
Yeah, I agree.
So is this question about whether or not it becomes a standalone commercial property, right? If it, it's...
Yeah, the, the question is whether the commercial use is grandfathered in when it's, when it's sold down the road.
Right.
So you'd have to look at past records.
So I think, right, the question is, what you said, is, is it grandfathered in? And if it is grandfathered in, is there any limitations as a board that we can put on it as well? So we need professional guidance on this, and I think we're gonna, right, Dean, we're gonna...
Yeah, if it's the board's consensus, we'll just table this until next time. Can we keep the public hearing open?
Yeah.
Can we continue the public hearing next time?
Can I move on for that? Can I?
Yeah, sure, sure. You can come on.
Yeah, if you've got some additional comments that we haven't already heard, that'd be great.
Number one, the sign she's talking about, this is...
What's that? I can't hear.
No, I'm sorry. Number one, the sign she's talking about does not light up. It was on when it was turned off at five o'clock, my business hours. I don't plan on selling the business to anybody else. And then number two, I got a sign permit from the, from the town here, and then they found out they didn't have a sign code. So it's kinda like it's grandfathered now, but it, and I did get the permit, which I have, so there's no reason why that sign should be removed if I don't wanna remove it. And since it doesn't work, I just left it there. There's a little sign on top that's probably nine square feet, maybe. But I did everything that either George Topman or whoever was in charge. I followed the rules. I got the permits from everybody where I wanted to put that in. And so, like I said, I've been there since ninety-seven, and unfortunately, when that thing lit up, my neighbor across the street had a fence, and they also said it was on at night, and it kept their son and their kids off and stuff, but the kids were in college. So, to me, it was exaggerated too much, but I didn't say anything about it, because unfortunately, you gotta make peace with the neighbors across the street and on the sides of you.
So your preference is to leave the sign in place, but the sign currently doesn't light up?
It hasn't light up, no.
Okay, and your intent is not to fix it and make it light up again?
No.
Okay.
I cost too much money and I have my agents, like I said, I'm to the point where I just wanna do certain jobs, and that's it.
Right, and I think the question is, the concern is, is that if you do sell it, your use is acceptable, and the way you use it is acceptable, but if you do sell it, it's not a more intensive use or a higher use is the concern, I think.
If we do sell out the back, well, actually, our grandkids out there in the tiny house, and we were planning on giving him the property, and then he gonna rent out our house to someone else to pay for the mortgage. And I was with the thing, with the shop, probably everything we throw out, 'cause there's no use to him for what he wants. So I don't plan on hiring more people, and I don't plan on driving anywhere than I am now. It's a one-man shop, one-man deal, and you can only do so much in a day time being one-man.
Okay.
Dean, I have a question.
Sure.
Have any, yeah, definitely Mr. Jeff Bill or someone from the town, because of the, sort of authority, think around the interpretation of the technical laws. I just think, reading the, what's the action item of the resolution for approving the minor subdivision, the question's more about, you know, does it fit the current use? And it's got plenty of acres, plenty of frontage. I'm sort of more inclined to say, hey, would you be acceptable removing your sign and granting it for, for my question? Or what is our hesitation now?
Well, I think that we're looking for conditions. And so one of the conditions would be that while Mr. Christopher owns the property, that he won't reactivate the electric lighting on the sign. The sign would stay in place. And that this parcel would not, you know, it's a non-conforming business use, and that would not continue when the parcel is sold.
Or more, or more extensive use. I think it's the biggest, other words. Current use is acceptable, but...
Well, I'm not sure that the current use is even acceptable if the...
If it's grandfathered in, it may be.
Yeah, so, so there's, that's the real crux of the matter.
It's a friendly question to understand, you know, why it might be delayed.
Right, right.
So I'm sure.
Well, and the, the subdivision kind of speaks to the fact that the original, the original non-conforming use was kind of allowed to continue based on the fact that it was a larger parcel. And if you subdivide the two, the parcel into, you know, two child parcels from the parent parcel, you have to answer the question, does that non-conforming use convey with both or either or none of those three different parcels? So, but my understanding is generally no, but I'd like...
Yeah, it sounds like you intend to go back to both the residential, but I think your colleague perhaps...
Can I say one more thing? I'm here to break that up, to move my house out back and sell the house out front. It's got nothing to do with the sign. It's been like the up for since, well, ninety-seven, it was a small sign, and then I was allowed to put up a bigger sign, but nothing's left or anything other than that. And it doesn't plan on being light, 'cause it's broke, so...
Okay, Board, any other questions? Is the consensus that we wanna table this until next meeting? Okay, so we'll table it, and we'll come back to it. It'll be on the agenda begin next month.
I said a quick comment. I think, I'm Craig's neighbor. I live at 140 after. I just wanted to make a comment that I think converting the shed would actually limit the further potential to be able to sell that as a business. Having a, converting that shed, yeah, converting that shed is gonna, into a residential, is going to mean that if any other sign shop were to potentially go and buy that, they would no longer have space to store intrus or anything else that they need. It would pretty much limit that, the current business actual structure to either be another storage shed for residents, should he sell that conversion, or to be another home, another residence, small location. So I don't have any objections to him to thirty. That's all I have.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
My name's Mark. We live right next door.
And what did you say, 140?
140.
Again, Mark, the, the neighbor asked whether it's grandfathered, and unfortunately, we can't give her an answer to that.
Yeah, I just wanted to add my thoughts to that. I think if there was any concern in that, and a concern being predicated on being upset about the sign from years ago, that's already been permed.
Yeah, you're right.
Like, permed on that. I think he's at this point where he just wants to convert a shed that's already in existence, so I have no objections to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you said we're tabling this. Are we keeping the public hearing open, or are we gonna...
Yeah, we keep the public hearing open. All right, next on our agenda tonight is 56 Bernick Hill Road. Is anybody here for 56 Bernick Hill? Anybody on the board have questions about this subdivision?
We talked about this last week, right?
Last meeting?
Yes. So are we gonna do, open this up to public? Is that correct?
Yeah, unless, is there any discussion from the board?
So my understanding is that the village is okay with this.
Correct.
And so the question is, are we okay with the rest of the land, which is basically vacant behind?
Exactly, it's basically deep lots.
Yeah.
And nothing's gonna be happening back there.
Yeah.
So, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing? John?
Second.
Do we have a second, Sandy? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll give it a minute here. Looks like it's raining outside.
So Dean, do we have to do the seeker on this, too?
Do you have a seeker resolution for it?
I'm sorry?
Seeker resolution.
Seeker resolution.
Potentially, on parcel B, they could make a flag lot, right? They have enough road frontage?
Well, let's see, what size are these lots? I think in order to, in order to make a flag lot, they'd have to come back to both the village and the town.
Well, right, but, but I was just thinking, in the future, they could.
I'm not sure what the village's requirements are for frontage.
Yeah. Well, on parcel eight, I don't think they could, 'cause the house is right in the middle of the lot.
So why was, why did they have to get a variance? Did they have to get a variance for this, from the, from the village? Is that right?
I think that they did, and I'm not sure why. I'm not sure if it was maybe setbacks, or, you would think not with, with dividing it, that they shouldn't have any setback issues. I don't know if it was variance because it was in jurisdictions. Uh, let's see.
We should close.
Second, anybody to close the hearing? Aye. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's go through the seeker. Al, you wanna read that for us?
Sure. Um, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No.
Two, will proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Three, will proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Four, will proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Five, will proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure, mass transit, biking, walkway?
No.
Six, will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No.
Seven, will proposed action impact existing water supplies?
No. No.
B, wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Eight, will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Nine, will proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources?
No.
No.
Ten, will proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Eleven, will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Do you hear a motion to move the resolution and the negative declaration? So, Tom, do you hear a second?
Second.
Christine?
Tom?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
John Citra?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Okay. Now, we'll move on to Wilson Road. Anybody here from Wilson Road? 178 Wilson Road? Can you get it back? This way. This is like our first look at Wilson Road, right? Let's get the interview, minor subdivision. Oh, no, we've looked at this one before, yeah.
Yeah. Or have we?
No, I don't think we have.
Yeah, we, oh, this board maybe didn't, but we haven't passed, looked at this. So this is where that house is, that's there. Um, I'm not sure. So there's any house there or not?
Oh, here we go.
Well, and there's a drive over.
I know that we, we recommended that they do this, because before they had, you know, a lot covering that, and they only had one way in, because you can always divide that back. So we thought it would be prudent to have, get back there for future subdivision.
So, so Dean, this is, the, the original parcel is parcel one, two, and three, and it's been divided into three? Is that correct?
No, it's one, two, three, and four.
And four. Yep, so it's this whole thing here.
So why is it say five acres?
And, and the house is on four, is my understanding, from what I saw.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have the Jumbotron tonight, so we can't look at the Google Maps, Google Maps or text.
What was your question, Al?
Well, the, the...
Says 5.45 acres.
On the forms, it says five acres.
Yeah, that, that's the...
That's just this portion.
These parcels.
What, why isn't the parcel four?
Why isn't parcel A?
I think that's a mistake.
Parcel four should be on there, too.
I mean, that's the way I interpret it.
Okay.
Which is what, 9.4? Is that what it says?
Okay, so for tonight, we just need more clarification, I guess, from the owner? Is that correct?
I think so.
Do we have a, are we gonna, or recommend a public hearing, or are we gonna wait on that?
I think we should recommend a, schedule a public hearing for next time, assuming that, yeah, assuming that the, the owner will be here. Does anybody have any other questions on this tonight?
It all looked pretty straightforward to me.
Okay, let's put it down for a public hearing for next month, please, Kelly. Sun Path. Anybody here from Sun Path? Something, doesn't look like it. They're not, they're just not very interested in following through. Um, something that I said to Al at the beginning of the meeting... Something that I said to Al at the beginning of the meeting, did everybody see that note from the Mahula estate, from Mr. Mazza? So if you look at the tax maps there, the Golden Garter, the North Forty, excuse me if I'm using old language, titles that maybe you don't recognize.
Dating yourself.
From the 1970s. And as you go south, then there's an additional three houses that are along the frontage there. And there are two parcels behind that. One is owned by the Mahula estate, and the other is Butler, a Butler parcel. And if you look at the proposal, the latest proposal from Sun Path, they had, to the south, they had originally been approved for two separate roads. And now, they only want the road to the west, which would go to the Butler property, but that would leave the Mahula property landlocked, which I get a little aggravated when I see these maps that don't show the neighboring parcels that surround, because, oh, there you go, there's Mahula's right there. So basically, there would be access to Butler's, but no access to the Mahula.
Can I interrupt you a second?
Sure.
Go ahead. Lynn, the, if you're here for the Perriville Road one, it got, it got canceled this morning. Just to let you know. Okay? Sorry.
Yeah, there was a medical emergency or something, so. So, that's my biggest concern here. It's not that they're not going to potentially link up to East Lake to the north because of the way the parcels there are currently developed. It's not particularly feasible to do that, but we certainly don't want a landlock to the south.
You're saying they're not going to do this?
Correct. But if you look at East Lake, you know, they have a, they have a northern road that forms a loop with the next subdivision to the north, so those are connected.
It would be helpful to see that northern section, because it doesn't, you can't tell that from this map.
Right, exactly.
And, you know, from my perspective, those were planned roads, and unless there's a reason for us to see it, where they, you know, where they can show that there's no reason to put the road there, it's kind of hard for us to make that decision.
Right. And we'll be able to look at that on, again, on the screen, and look at the Google Maps.
So, so this, the prior map was different from this map, is what you're saying?
The one that was approved? The one that was approved, yeah. Yeah, run through here as well.
So can, for the next meeting, can we get a copy of the prior map, so we can make the comparison? Is that?
Is that?
Is it in here?
No.
Maybe I missed it.
I don't have one here. I have two.
Oh, it is, okay. What about one of those documents?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's not shown here. It's not shown. Submit it.
So where are we at on this right now? Nobody's here, so we're not?
Nobody's here, so I think we just glance at it and see if people have questions tonight that maybe want to address this next time and table it.
So why is this being brought up again? We've seen this, I've seen this at least three times.
I was going to say, this is the third time for me, because they wish to develop without having to pay for infrastructure.
I agree with Sandy, this should be a strike if unless we're going to have a person here. That's what you were saying. It shouldn't even be on our agenda, unless we're going to have a number of people here.
Well, no, what I was saying is, I've been on this board long enough that I've, they've come to us three times about this, and we've said no each time. So I don't know why it's coming back around, as there are more reasons that they have decided not to, they don't want to build it.
Well, they don't want to pay for the infrastructure.
Right, right, you just said that.
That's what it comes down to. It's expensive to build infrastructure. But we, the planning board before us approved, you know, originally Phase One and Phase Two, and Phase Two included that infrastructure.
Yes.
And there's no change in our comprehensive plan for the town that would signify reason to make an exception.
No, no, in fact, as we worked through the comp plan, one of the desires was to make sure that we didn't have a whole bunch of hammerheads and, you know, no way out when you get in. We want to be able to drive in and have, have a way to be able to easily drive out of any of these subdivisions.
Well, and the property owners shouldn't be penalized because of them not wanting to build the roads.
That's right, because we approved.
Yeah.
And people make decisions based on what was approved.
Right.
And the other thing is, we don't want additional, you know, roads there, like a new road between Lake Watch and whatever the Golden Garter is now. You know, we want to put a road in there to be able-
No, it's parking, right?
Yeah, it's parking, and you wouldn't want to put a road in there.
Mm-mm.
We've got enough roads on Route 34 there, so. And from the Mahula property, that would be the only way to access it, if there's not access through here.
Right.
All right, so we will table that for next month, and put it on the agenda again next month. And maybe somebody will show up.
Third motion.
What's that?
This is the-
This is the third, no show.
Yeah, yeah.
So, leave a note for John to contact them, see if they're planning to show, because if they're not planning to show next month, we're not going to.
So have they agreed to, to the going over here?
Or just? Just this.
Just that.
Yeah, they want a hammerhead here, and they just want to do this. So that there's, I mean, there's already access here, but this gives access here.
So this was landlocked before?
Yes, but the previous iteration that was approved had access here and here.
Okay.
So this is what we need to put in, right? That's what they don't want. You know, these lots are all, you know, acre and a half. This one's almost two.
So they would have to get rid of a lot?
No, not necessarily. They just have to shrink, shrink them, depending on what the frontage requirements are.
Okay, so that's, that's the problem right there. And you think they'll put that one in?
Well, that, that's part of the conditions, is, and that's something I have to ask John Zepco, is, you know, can we condition, you know, building permits upon having the infrastructure in place first? I'm not, I'm not sure what the answer is to that.
Dean?
Yes?
Can I, just a quick comment on 430 Perriville Road?
Sure.
So, it appears to me that the current use of the property is different than the use that we had approved years ago. And so I, I would like to hear or see an explanation from planning and/or legal on the, the current use versus the use that was defined in our site plan. Is anybody?
I totally agree.
Good point.
I mean, it seems like they're doing stuff that was not originally intended.
So if we could have that, something from John and/or Guy for the next meeting on the difference and why? Are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I remember the last iteration that came before us, that it was going to be their own limited use yard and not something open to retail for the public, was my understanding.
And it's really expanded.
Well, and then, yes, what, that's, that's another question, is, what were the boundaries on the site plan approval previously, and what are they now? And looking at the elevations there, too, are they continuing to build this thing, you know, up? And kind of buffering is there from the neighbors?
Right.
Because you drive on Schofield, you can see gravel pines.
Well, you can drive on 34B and you see gravel pines.
Well, yeah, I'm not as concerned from 34 as I am from, you know, like Schofield, where the neighbors are now looking at it. And then, you know, there's potentially wetlands in the area, and I don't know if there's actual wetlands on the property, so we're going to want to have a wetland delineation potentially there. So definitely need to have that information.
And you want a landscape plan, too, right?
Oh, yeah.
So the, what's been before us so far, there's not enough detail on that.
Yeah, this was supposed to be the sketch.
Distance to the sign, you know, I think there's a setback for signage where it's going to be, and distance, and where the buildings are going to be located, right? All that stuff.
Yeah, if there's, there's some vegetation there that provides screening now, but it doesn't screen the whole, the whole place to the north and the east.
Is that whole area ag? Schofield and-
I think it is.
All of that area is ag?
Joe, you have, you want to talk to us about the moratorium for a year?
Sure.
So we're just going to do some continuing ed over the next year, and that's it?
Well, let's start with the easier stuff. Because the town did hire, what, what's the name of the company? We hired Colliers to do the rewriting of the zoning code that happened at the last meeting. And we've got a committee together, Dean's on it, John's on it, and it seems like a good group. We've met once, people are starting to get up to speed on what's happening, we're going to meet with the consultant next, and then we're going to just start the process, and hopefully, within a year and a half, we'll have a whole new zoning code to work with. And the plan is to keep this group involved, so don't feel like you're going to be left out. Just, you've got three of us who are going to keep talking to you, but, you know, input from this group is going to be very important, because part of what we want to do is we want to fix all the hiccups that you guys run into, in which this part of the code's not clear, you guys would like to be able to push some things, but you don't have the ability to do so. So we want to get all that stuff fixed, which is going to require input from this group. Let's see what else I want to... I think those are, that's the major thing. And of course, the moratorium that we're planning on passing at our next meeting this Wednesday. The idea is, now that we're starting this rebuild of the zoning, and it's going to be a fairly major one, we don't want people to come in with a bunch of projects that did the old zoning, but might not fit the new zoning, and flood the town with that kind of stuff while we're in the process of figuring out what to do. And so the idea is to cut back major projects. Obviously, single-family homes, smaller projects will still be allowed to go through, but the larger projects that would have a real impact on the town is what we want to hold off on until we can get new zoning in place, so that we can move forward based on what the comprehensive plan recommends. That's the quick answer. I'm sure you guys have questions. I saw Al first.
So I read Roos, I didn't get a chance to read the whole-
Fifteen pages.
Whatever. But Roos said that subdivision or splits were only going to be allowed in the R-zone. We have half the town in an ag zone. So if a farmer wants to break off an acre of land and sell it to help pay for machinery, he or she can't do that?
I don't remember what the specifics are on, on subdivisions. I'd have to look at the law. I recommend you look at the law to make sure that it's the way you think it is. It's up on the town's website.
So where'd I find it on the town's website?
When you go to the homepage.
Latest news.
It's on the agenda as well.
Yeah, go to Latest News, and it's one of the three or four pop-downs for it.
But you see what my point is, if you're going to allow it in an R1, 2, the 3-zone, you should allow it in the ag zones.
I understand what you're saying, and I don't remember that level of detail, so I can't answer where specifically, which, I know there's some subdivisions that are allowed, larger ones or not, I don't remember the detail. The only reason we really put the ag zone into this law was because of the overlay districts are going to have a major change in the ag zone. I think otherwise, the ag zones only get minor changes, but when you start talking about steep slopes, riparian areas, that's going to affect the ag zone, and so we wanted the moratorium to be part of it for that part of the thing. I'm hoping, and we haven't gotten worked out with the consultant yet, that we can get those overlay districts in early, and just take the ag zone completely out of the moratorium at an earlier rate.
But I think it, I think it should have been reviewed by the planning board, all of us, that should have been proposed to us before now, so we could make comments and suggestions to you guys, saying, hey, this is a good idea, no, this isn't a bad idea, or you better add this or take away that.
And you can, I mean, we have not passed this law.
Yeah, but we got one day to do it in. I mean, that's pretty, pretty rush, you know?
I know, and part of the idea is you don't want to announce a moratorium far in advance, and have everybody rush the moratorium as well. And so the idea is to put this forward quickly. Give us your comments. It's not a done deal. It's probably going to pass, but I can't guarantee it will, and if you guys come up with some real comments, we can revise it and pass it at the next meeting with revisions. And we've certainly done that in the past with the outlaws. It's not, you know, we've, we've set a vote on it, but we haven't done the vote. So, give your comments. Go over it, you and I can go over it after the meeting now in person and figure it out.
Oh, let me give you, yeah, I'll take a look at it tomorrow, but I mean, that's, again, it was a quick-
It is.
It's, I just think, Joe, and last time, this came up years ago, moratorium, the town board presented it to the planning board and said, hey, guys and gals, would you review this, give us your opinion, your comments, and your concerns? And I think, to be honest with you, I think the town board should have let us review it and then gotten back to you before you've taken it to a potential fault.
I understand what you're saying, and I'm, I'm here tonight to, like, get some of that input, and give me the feedback, and let's talk about what's there. I think I saw John, and then, John?
Yeah. And a couple, yeah, I think more time, because I watch the town board meetings, and I heard moratorium come up, but didn't hear what a moratorium was for. So I went online, I checked it out, and I read it, and it could potentially be harmful to me, building, if I wanted to build a 3,200 square foot building in an IR district, is that, you know, I can't do it. And I think it's very broad, and can be pared down to specific things, but if I hadn't been watching, I would have no idea that it was going on and going to be voted down Wednesday, which I think is, if you want input, I think you need more time. For someone like me, that if I hadn't found out, all of a sudden, I got a building out planning, now I can't do it for a year, it could be very harmful in that situation.
Well, I will point out, there is a variance process. It's not an absolute.
I've gone through that before, and it adds one, two, three months on top of coming here, which could be three, four months in itself, between public hearings, revisions. So now all of a sudden, if I have to wait a year to get approval to build, that's another eight months if I have to go through variance, it's just, it's so costly.
I glanced at it, Joe, isn't that variance thing pretty restrictive or pretty tight?
It is, it is fairly restrictive. You don't want, yeah, you don't want everybody just coming in and saying, I need the zoning code, let me have a variance.
But back to John's question, if he looks to do that, it could be intensive or restrictive or whatever. It's not a-
And it's not a done deal. You may not get it, you spent three months doing it, but it's, IR district, it's just, it can be very harmful for people, without giving enough time to talk about it with all of us, the community. And we, we give public hearings, notices out 30 days, why is it a week? I'd rather have it be 30 days.
I, I hear you, I'm hearing that, and I will definitely bring this back to the town board, so. It's, it's not that I'm ignoring, I'm giving you what our rationale is, and I'm listening to your issues.
All right, that's fine, but, you know, we have concerns as well.
Yeah, yeah, and I hear that.
Did John have any comments?
Actually, I'm not hearing you.
I was going to say, Mr. Juicy had some great comments there. My question was just-
My question was just, the moratorium, and because of the planning review process, I understand, do you think that's two years, five years? Do you, do your contractor, your consultant is gonna help do this comprehensive revision? Is there a timeline for what they think to expect?
Um, we're talking with the consultant about an eighteen-month timeline to get the whole thing done. Obviously, that can change as we get into the process. The idea was to put a moratorium in for the first year, see where we are at that point, and see whether we want to do a continuance, a partial continuance, or not at all.
All right, so hopefully eighteen months is the goal.
Eighteen months is the timeline that everybody's setting.
With an asterisk, of course, yeah.
Yeah, the usual asterisk, you know, maybe they'll come in at seventeen months, maybe they'll come in at twenty.
The, the most recent moratorium in my time here is just the, the gas service hookup for a nice thing, and that's, there's no plans to...
That's a whole difference.
That's what I, I just think of the word being used, and that is my association with it, you know, I just, yeah.
Those are totally different processes, and they have nothing to do with each other. This is a one-year moratorium.
Oh, you think, okay, there's...
It is specifically a one-year moratorium.
With the option to extend it?
Yeah.
And it doesn't say how long?
Right, but, you know, realistically, we could just do another moratorium right after this one, we don't have to have an option to be able to do so. So, I think the option is there to say we might feel the need to extend it, but, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to find that balance between not making it too long, but long enough that we're able to get far enough in the process that we know what to say no to and yes to.
So, so, Joe, I, I'm a little bit curious, when you say you want people to jump in here when they hear the word moratorium, and all of a sudden, you know, they've got a project approved under the wire.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't see how that's possible. If you give people sixty-day, if you gave a sixty-day notice of a moratorium, I don't see it's possible for people to apply, come in here for site plan review, do a public hearing, and get approval within sixty days, or maybe even ninety days, especially if it was a commercial project.
Okay.
Because normally, those do take, you know, three, four months, I mean, just look at some of the simple ones that we've had lately, like the one just right up around the corner here on Auburn Road, and they've already been back, I don't know, two or three times. And so, I'm very surprised that those of us who are on the zoning revision committee didn't hear the word moratorium in discussions, saying, hey, we're putting out the RFQ, one thing that we're considering along the line here is, we want to make sure that we don't have a bunch of development that's not gonna align with our new zoning, so we're looking at doing a moratorium. I'm very, very surprised that we didn't hear a word until, you know, I checked my email tonight, I'm like, what?
Okay, I'm, I'm getting that. Al?
I understand, you know, the concept behind the moratorium, what you're saying, and alignment and all that, and I understand that, but at the same time, it's awful harsh for people out there. There was no other avenue that you could approach to try and balance the, the alignment with the, hopefully, the new, new zoning and, you know, the, the, the limitations of what you want to do?
I'm, I'm not following what you're saying.
So, so you have, you have a concern about the alignment, and the solution is to do a moratorium?
Alignment of what?
Isn't that what you're saying?
Alignment of new development with the, with the new zoning.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm just trying to follow you.
So, the purpose behind this is, is, is trying to align or balance things with what you hope the new zoning will be. But, but my question is, there is, there was no other avenue than saying, okay, we're just gonna stop construction, boom, you know?
What would, what would the avenue you suggest be?
I don't know, I just said, I'm questioning, was there no other discussion other than a moratorium?
I'm not sure what the other avenue would be, so I'm, I'm asking you what the other possibility would be.
Well, it can't, it can't be a broad blanket, like, like I gave an example of myself. It's so broad, it covers something. Mine would be very small, with no impact on anybody, but yet I can't do it for a year, so the blanket's huge.
The blanket is huge, because we're doing a huge revision of our zoning.
I think it's unfair to people, landowners.
It, it, it is, it is a burden, and I recognize that, and we're trying to find the balance, and the main thing I'm hearing from this group is, we should be voting on it in October and not in September. That's the main thing I'm hearing.
I think so, you definitely need more time for input.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, and I'm hearing that loud and clear from you.
I think we advertise it like we do the taxes, put it on the board, let everyone know. The blue board, pay your taxes.
Well, certainly, people are hearing about it, because we've gotten two hundred different comments on it already.
Really?
Yes.
I'm not concerned about an avalanche of people applying, because people don't even show up here.
Yeah, I agree, you know, there's not a big rush for development and landscaping at the moment. I think it's gonna be a very polarizing law.
I, I hear that. Sandy, I'm seeing you.
I'm, I'm just a little concerned, 'cause I was on the comp plan, and I know our timeline, and we never met it. I mean, we, we had timelines, then we had timelines, then we had timelines, and, and how long did it take? Five years? Seven years?
That was, that was different, because what we've got is a consulting firm who's got a timeline.
That we're paying real money to, that's actually gonna get stuff done, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is a different kind of ballgame. We've worked with them when they were Ralph Bergman, and they follow their timeline. If they say eighteen months, maybe it'll be nineteen or twenty, but it's not gonna be twenty-five. And Dean shaking, you know, nodding his head thing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a happening thing, it's not like the way we've done business in the past, where it's just been all volunteer, and everybody just has too much on their plate.
And a part-time staff, and...
Yeah, exactly, so that's the whole reason behind getting this, this grant, having this money, and putting it out there and spending it, getting somebody professional in to drive the process. And we've got a good group, too. How many are on the group, is it fifteen?
I think it's twelve or thirteen, I forget, but...
Joe, I think that's a good idea, what you said, I think you should have the meeting, open it up for public comment, even written comment, but not vote on it on Wednesday, that's too soon, even for you guys to sit down and digest it. You may have a lot of comments, there may be some good comments in there that you may want to revise, this section or that section, and then do the voting on the next one.
Well, if we, if we want to do any revisions that are significant, we would have to push it off to the next meeting, because the public gets a chance to review the change document, too.
Right, but I'm saying, the public may have a comment saying, and you guys go, wait, yeah, that is a good idea, we need to revise the, and then vote on it with the revised revision in there. I just think that's a great idea.
Well, if, if, if anyone were to come forward, I'm just putting this hypothetically, and said, you should do X, and we look at that and say, that's a really important thing, we need to change it, we would have to move it to the next meeting. We could not change it and then vote on it.
Okay.
Because the public has to have a chance to comment on a substantially revised document as well.
But I think it would, it would give the town board members a chance to just to kind of discuss, there's a bunch of comments about this, or a bunch of comments about that. I think, you know, you hear the comments and then to vote on it immediately, I don't, I don't know if that's, that's really good.
You guys do it all the time.
What's that?
You guys do it all the time. It, it depends on the comments, and, and what I'm hearing from you guys is you want more time to review it, and that's, that seems reasonable to me.
Truthfully, with most of the reviews we see, we see them twice, so we don't just hear the comments and then...
And the town board's, yeah, and the town board's been looking at this and discussing it for a while, it's not like it's, you know...
Yeah, but those have been internal.
Yes.
And in the ag district, let's say you're a farm in the ag district, you can still build a building or do whatever you want. Now, a lot of times, farms are big business, millions of dollars, so you're gonna allow a farm to continue to do business, but you're not gonna allow other businesses to build for a year.
We can't tell a farm to stop building things or change things.
But then I don't know how, you're, you're stopping one, but not stopping...
We don't have the authority over planning of farms, that's been taken over by the state.
But you do have authority over the ones you're stopping.
Yes, I understand that.
It's very unfair.
I, I understand, and there's, there's, there's good reasons for the way the farm laws are, and it's problematic. It takes away a lot of planning ability for the town, but it also keeps the towns from limiting farms from being farms. And, and the balance of New York State has said, has been pretty harsh, in which New York State says, we decide what farms can do, and we will fight for the farmer if he tries to push back too hard. And so, the farms are exempt, because the New York State is the man.
I know, I know, it's very unfair, you're choosing one business over another, they're all business, you know?
I understand, they do the same thing with solar.
Is solar on the, on the...
Small-scale solar is on the moratorium, large-scale solar, New York State regulates, and we have no sale.
They choose, you know?
Yeah, and it, it, again, it's how New York State regulates it, so we have no choice.
Well, on Wednesday, they'll probably be pretty busy.
I expect there to be a lot of people here on Wednesday.
So, you'll, you'll take our, I think, our, some of us anyways, like the idea of postponing the vote till one more month, and take...
I think that was everybody, I didn't see anybody...
You'll take that back to the town board, ask the board members, that the planning board's recommendation is to open it up for public comment, both verbal and written, and then, and actually vote the following month.
Just one clarification a little bit, so if someone had presented to us within the past year, with a grandfather in, that came in during this moratorium, or is it just...
No, it's, they'd have to be approved, is what I'm reading here, already, which, again, means, you know, it could be three, four months out before somebody's starting the process now, 'cause you hope to...
So, so if that's the case, so we have some, we talked about today, if you vote the moratorium tomorrow, Wednesday, the ones that came in today, what happens to those?
I don't think any of these would be affected by what we read today.
Um, Guy, Guy, when I talk with Guy about this, he's talking about a vested interest into the process, and so, once you get to a certain point...
Oh, that's, okay.
And, and he understands the vested better than he's been able to explain it to me, but it's not, I just put in an application, it's more than...
It's, I've gotten to a public hearing?
It's, it's, it's more than I just put in the application, it's, I've put into the process enough that this is moving forward, but I can't tell you where that line is.
Some of the zoning with single-family homes are already exempted, so...
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at industrial, for instance, if, I think there's a big difference between, hey, I want to put another building up within an, an industrial park, then I want to put up an industrial building, maybe in an IR area that doesn't, that's not developed yet, for instance.
So, we're still deciding what's going to be industrial and what's not, that's part of what's on the table for...
Well, an existing industrial park that's partially built out is probably gonna still remain in the industrial park that's gonna have more industrial buildings built there.
But the question is, are we, what limitations on industrial buildings? And I think that's part of what we're gonna find out from Colliers, is, you know, part of what Colliers has brought to the table is a real understanding of what New York State is requiring of towns, and what other towns are doing, to kind of give us ideas of things that we should have in our zoning that we haven't thought of.
So, did Colliers recommend a moratorium?
Yes, they did.
Change the subject, the data center?
Yes.
There's a lot of stuff out there flying around on the internet, some of which is probably not true, so...
Just a guess, just a guess.
So, my comment is that we, either the planning board, the town, somebody needs to put stuff out there of what is proposed, and then we can get into, you know, you know, obviously, this planning board is gonna look at environmental, we're gonna look at noise, we're gonna look at lighting, all that stuff, and this is a project that's probably, I'm guessing it's gonna take over a year to get through the planning board, not longer, if there's no moratorium and all that affects it. So, the next meeting, is that gonna, is that gonna come up, the, the details of this project?
Well, let's start off with, I don't know if you saw my comments in the paper, but my comments were essentially, it's really hard to give you ID, or give you feedback on this project, 'cause we haven't seen a site plan yet, and without a site plan, we don't know. They're scheduled to come before you in October for a sketch plan. I, we met with them in December, we met with them last week, the plans changed dramatically from one to the other, the plans they described were, um, well, let, let me describe it this way, one of the things they thought about was, could we do a heat exchange thing, in which instead of just blowing the heat in the air, we send a pipe down to Cornell, their lake source cooling, and send the heat up to them? But they haven't talked to Cornell, they haven't set up any easements, and they're coming to you for site plan approval, so I'm not sure how serious a plan that is.
I mean, so are they gonna put along the railroad bed?
That was what they were suggesting, but they don't have easements for that, and so, it's, it's kind of, you know, I'm hearing directly from Terrible, ideas that are sketchy and not worked out, and they haven't even started talking to their other partners, and so, no, I can't give you a nice fact sheet of what they're gonna do, because when I talk to them, I'm getting sketchy, well, maybe we'll do this, and maybe we'll do that, we're still thinking about this, we're still doing that, and so, until they have a piece of paper in front of you guys, I don't even have something to comment on.
Yeah, when you, when you've got waste, waste heat, I mean, you need to be bringing a proposal, you would think, that would have a companion business that's gonna use that process water, or, you know, whatever is going on, or that excess heat.
And they're talking about, maybe they can generate electricity with it through some system, and maybe, maybe they can, I don't know, but I haven't seen a proposal on paper of saying, this is what we're planning on doing. And I'm not sure what they're gonna bring to you next October, I'm sure it's going to be a similar thing of, here's all the things we'd like to do, but I don't think they're gonna have a full-on plan for you, because I think that's part of the idea of sketch plan, is to come to you and say, here's the things we're thinking of, which ones do you like, which ones do you hate, and help us sort it down. So, I don't think you're gonna see a real plan, even in October.
So, in, in the past, when we've considered or heard about that, one of the, one of the considerations is, often data centers are used almost like a battery, that they consume a certain amount of, of energy, electricity typically, and the idea would be that, you know, if it's a data center that's storing data, that it's not the only place that's storing your data, so there are potentially other places that are already, are also backed up in storing your data, too, so that if one needs to go down for maintenance, or if one needs to go down because there's a spike in demand for the local grid, that they can go offline, so that all of a sudden, that usage goes away, so that you're not gonna have a brownout or a blackout.
Well, let me slow you down here for a second. Everything you read last year about data centers is obsolete, they're changing that fast. They're changing fast enough, I forget where, I read about this one data center that I think Microsoft was building, they put ninety million dollars into it, they're about a third of the way through, and they scrapped it, because they redesigned it with a different set of computers and a different layout, and they ripped out their ninety-million-dollar facility and started building something completely different, because the technology had changed from when they started construction to before they finished. So, all that stuff's out the window. Right now, there's two different kinds of data centers that are being talked about, there is the always-on, these are the ones where you see the big backup generators, and they have dual everything, because they can never go off, because they need to be on a hundred percent of the time, no matter what else is happening, and there are the data centers that can power themselves down for high-load times, so, you know, middle of summer, when it's really hot, they can turn themselves off and, and take their demand off the grid. They're talking about doing the second, but we don't regulate what they do, we just regulate...
So, once it's, once it's built, they can determine if they want to change?
They can, they can determine if they want to change, so, so we really don't have control over what kind of data center, and there might be a third one out there that I don't even know about, that's, you know, being considered, but we don't have control over that. What we do have control over is, are you putting diesel generators outside, or are you putting, you know, that kind of thing?
Are they using fuel cells?
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta have, they're gonna have a tremendous amount of diesel generators, and they have to re-fire up like once a day, or once every other day, to make sure they're running, and if it goes, the power goes down, I mean, the pollution that that would put in the atmosphere from the diesel generators, and the noise is tremendous.
Well, let's, let's just run some numbers, and I'm gonna run you numbers that I've gotten from other places, but, so Terrible's press release that they put out two or three weeks ago, said they want to build a four-hundred-megawatt data center, so that, remember the four-hundred megawatts? Tompkins County uses eighty-seven megawatts for a comparison, so you can get an idea how big this thing is. They're talking now about starting with a fifty-megawatt to expand to a hundred-and-twenty-eight megawatts. They don't think they can get past three-hundred megawatts, 'cause they have to go to the IOA or something, the Energy Board, and say, we need this much power, and they'll say, you can have this much power if you do these grid improvements. They don't think they can get past three-hundred megawatts, is what they're telling me on the side, but I also... But I also saw the press release that their parent company put out, which, it's why I can't give you a fact sheet because I've got five different numbers going on.
I'm just saying, we have questions, the board, we're all going to have questions, and the public's going to have questions. And so, instead of having stuff, not, I'm not saying your stuff is false, I'm just saying there's other comments that are out there that.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah. And, and, you know, their, their press release said that they're planning on using, you know, water from the lake. Or they said, we have this great water withdrawal system from the lake, which their permit has expired. Personally, they're telling me, no, we're not going to withdraw from the lake. But that's, that's the same company giving me two different stories that, you know, don't match up. And so, yeah, we're all sitting here asking questions, and there's no wonder that the public is running around with all kinds of fears of, oh, my God, they're going to, you know, heat up the lake tremendously because 400 megawatts of heat is a lot of heat.
Yeah.
And they've got real reasons to be afraid of that, but it may not be true at all. And this is one of the things I said to, well, the folks at Terrible, is, you guys got to talk to the public because the public is going to be more afraid of what they don't know than what you're actually going to do.
Yes.
Have there been others in New York recently?
Well, they've got another center up at Somerset.
Yeah, Somerset. So, Ontario, right by the power plant there. So, so one of the questions is, you know, what does that do to local rates? If there's huge demand for power, and, you know, does that drive up our rates because
Yeah.
there, there are infrastructure improvements that have to be made to the grid that we all get to pay for to subsidize?
Two, two different piles of money. Infrastructure upgrades, the IO something, I, I don't have the initials, will usually make them pay for the infrastructure upgrades. But the peak power demands, that goes on everybody. And so, and, you know, maybe they're not going to be a peak power thing. Maybe they're going to turn themselves off every time power demand hits a certain level. That's what they're saying they'll do, but I don't have anything in writing saying that's what they're required to do. And so, again, I don't know.
But those upgrades, who pays for those upgrades? We all pay for those.
Well, no, no, no. In general, what happens is the Energy Board that says, you know, can you use this much power? Yes, but you have to rebuild this infrastructure, rebuild that in order to do so. They actually do put those expenses on the person who's using the major power thing. Now, I'm a little bit worried about Bolton Point because if they're not drawing from the lake, they're drawing from Bolton Point. And are there going to be a huge demand of water on Bolton Point?
Well, to take, take away all the potential water that can be used for development in the town.
Right, or, or just.
They have to do in a water district to run a new line all the way up there.
Well, and, and is the water district going to have to pay for the infrastructure upgrades because we put a huge new use on it? And I, if that's happening, I want them to pay for the infrastructure upgrade. And right now, they're talking about, they, they fill up their tanks during non-peak hours and use it during peak hours and all that, which may be true. And I don't know if you guys can require it, and that's one of the things that I'm unsure about, is do we have the ability to regulate a big water withdrawal from our system? I mean, we obviously can't do it from QLH, but can we do it for Bolton Point? And we're responsible to our water districts to make sure that we manage them in a way that's fair to everybody in the district. And I, I don't know, I haven't looked at how those things work, but I'm worried that we don't have the regulations in place to enforce fairness on that.
So, the water that NICEG used, volume-wise versus the water that they may use, how, what's the comparison there?
NICEG was pulling from the lake. Their, their lake was.
Yeah. But isn't there a water line that goes to NICEG?
There is, but they, they were using for the power plant, they were withdrawing from the lake, and they have permit for that, and they've got infrastructure.
So, the water from Bolton Point to the power plant was not used for electric generation?
I don't know for, no, it wasn't. I don't know if they're hooked up. I'm assuming they are. And it was just used for internal toilets and stuff, is my understanding. But again, I haven't looked at their plans as to, you know, what was used for what. But it certainly, they certainly weren't pulling to do that power plant. That's way too much water for Bolton Point to, and there's no point filtering it the way Bolton Point does.
Exactly. Yeah. And there's no point in basically taking that infrastructure that is meant for other development, you know, and using it there.
Mm-hmm.
Because
Yeah.
it's not the highest and best use.
Well, I certainly don't want, if, if we need to, you know, put another water tank up, say, to, in order to, you know, increase it or increase the size of the pipe, I don't want that borne on everybody.
Exactly.
That, that's my key thing. Maybe we'll do it, maybe we won't, but if we do, I want that major user who's putting the strain on it to require that, to pay most if not all of those costs.
I guess, and then what I've read is the, it's the noise, the hum from that, that constant humming is what bothers the neighbors from these, these existing data centers?
The fans, you know, Buffalo, if you just do data center Buffalo, you can read about the neighbors saying it's this constant, you know, background noise.
We would have to have a noise study done, like we had a traffic study done, I would say.
Mm-hmm. And, and they're saying that they've got special, really low noise fans. I, and I don't know if they do. I don't know if we've got rules in place to require it. I mean, we could, we could certainly talk about it, but I don't know how strong our rules are to be able to force what kind of thing in an industrial zone, which is next to a residential zone.
Right, it's residential. I mean, you, I said that Dean, you've been, I've been out on the lake, and, and you can sit on a, on a calm day, you can be in the middle of the lake, and you can hear somebody talking on the shoreline.
Yeah.
In a carriage across the lake. So, is the noise from that plant going to affect Ulysses even?
I, I, I agree with you. I understand, and I can't answer that. And I can't answer, and this is part of where the moratorium comes in. I've got a lot of questions as to whether our rules and regulations are ready for an operation like this to come forward. And I want them to be ready for it. I want to be able to say, okay, if you're going to be a huge water withdrawal, you're going to have to pay for the infrastructure upgrades. I want to be able to say, if the noise is going to be above X decibels, you're going to have to find a way of muffling it because we're not going to allow that in our community. I don't think we have those in place yet, and that's what worries me.
Couldn't, couldn't you come up with a moratorium that said, okay, anything over a certain square footage or dollar value has a moratorium as opposed to placing the moratorium across everyone in the town as a whole?
Well, you want to put it across the entire town because you don't want these things placed anywhere.
No, but, but, right. I'm not saying specifically this, this thing or this place, but the moratorium would be, anything over X, a million dollars is, is, there's a moratorium based on the dollar value rather than saying across the town as a whole.
Well, I think there's other things that we're trying to accomplish with the moratorium too. I don't want to see a string of dollar stores get put in while we're putting in new zoning that might not allow them in the areas that they would go in.
Yeah, but again, you, you know, you've got to be realistic. It's, it's all on market, and there's never going to be more dollar stores coming in. I mean, it's already, the market's already absorbed the need.
I, I, I'm not confident in that. I'm not confident that one of the other chains won't come in and say, well, okay, we're going to try to, you know, go head-to-head with them. I don't know. What I want is, I want the town to be able to sit down in a relaxed 18-month schedule, but relaxed to be able to say, all right, what do we want? And not have, you know, we start saying, well, we're thinking of restricting this in this zone. And suddenly someone's saying, well, I better build that right now because this is my last chance.
Give my drive-through, my drive-through window right now.
Yeah. I want us to be able to have those discussions very publicly and not have the ramification of somebody tries to push something in really quickly because they're afraid they're about to lose it.
No, Joe, you're going to put this board out of a job.
No, you're going to be helping us with the zoning update.
But I think my example is a good reason to delay it.
I understand that. And I'm, I, I hear your example, and you should definitely put comments in.
Written, you'll, can people come up and speak or do written? Does it matter?
You could do both. Like I said, we've gotten a couple hundred comments already. They, we got them sent to us late this afternoon, so I haven't read them yet. But I will.
Speaking will probably be restricted to
Three minutes.
Three minutes. So, definitely put it in writing as well.
Yeah, yeah, put, put in writing. I would not try to talk to town board members individually outside the meeting because that isn't going to, you know, be righteous like we don't try to do that to you. But yeah, definitely bring your comments in. You can mail them to the town clerk, or you can mail them to all of us. I would suggest that you at least keep the town clerk in the loop because they're trying to do a consolidated, here's all the comments.
What if they don't get to you by Wednesday?
If the comments.
When would you vote on it? If you, if like if I mail it, it's not going to meet to you by Wednesday?
You would email it, I assume.
Mail, okay.
Yeah, email it. I think they prefer it that way because they're trying to consolidate everything. We got one packet of them today. I assume I'll get another packet of them tomorrow.
Would you vote on it on Wednesday too, or no?
Well, this group's asking us not to. I'm only one board member, so I can't promise you anything other than I will bring your concerns to the town board.
I'm assuming that the clerk's going to help you to consolidate comments, kind of like we did with the, the dandy. Here is this comment, here's this comment, there's eight people said this one, and 20 people said that one.
I don't think she's going to do that. I think she's just going to give us the comments and, you know, I feel obligated to read them all, and I will.
Well, you should, yes.
Yeah, I feel, yeah.
All of you should, all of you.
I can't speak for the rest of the boys. I, I agree. I think that I have an obligation to read them. But if something shows up at 5 o'clock on Wednesday, I can't say I'd read it before the meeting.
Right. But, and then that's, that's another reason why it maybe should be postponed, because you may get comments in the morning. Some of your board members are working all day long. They may not have time to.
I, I hear you on that. And I also know that that'll be true on next month as well, that someone may come in with the last minute.
I thought everyone was retired here.
But you, you know what I'm saying.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
But I mean, you could, you could put a comment type period on the comment, written comments coming in.
Yeah, but Al, I, I can put a written comment saying everything has to be in Monday before the town board meeting. If someone sends something in Tuesday, I'm going to consider it.
Right, right. But you, you follow what I mean.
Yeah, and you follow what I'm saying.
If I sent to you what John was saying on, on Wednesday morning, most of the board members probably are not going to have time to read that. Especially if it's a lot.
And, and, and I think that's something the town board members are going to have to discuss, is, did everyone have a chance to read how many are there by Wednesday? I've got 200 today, a bunch on Sunday and a bunch on today.
Wow, that's a lot for them to, you know, they're working tomorrow and Wednesday.
And most of them are short. I kind of glance at them. Most of them are a line or two, and you know how that is. But there are others that are, you know, much longer, and they have links to other articles and stuff, and that takes more time. So, I, I think it's important that as a board member, that I give all the comments real consideration. And I don't know what I'm going to get between now and Wednesday. And so, you know, I'm hearing you. I'm hearing you all say, push it to October. I'm hearing you say, this is going to affect me greatly. But I think you need to say that to the whole town board, not just to me. And I think you need to do it in detail, saying, here's, here's what I'm thinking of, here's what's going on, here's, here's where I think the line ought to be instead of where it is. You know, same kind of comment.
And I see, I see the reason why you, you would put one in for, you know, data centers for huge developments that might be, you know, be pushed through in the wrong spot. But I, I just noticed myself, I'm like, whoa, I just happened to be watching the meeting, and I didn't know anything about it without that. So, caught off-guard.
Well, I, I think the 3,000 square foot limit was the idea of, we don't want a bunch of small chain retails getting put in while we're doing this. Because we're going to be changing where the business districts are, we're going to be changing things around, I don't know. What we're, what we're looking at, and this is the way New York State would like us to approach it, is say, where's your infrastructure? And put your development, your, your heavy developable zones, where are your sewers, where your water is, where your major roads are, where, where it can handle that kind of development.
The traffic.
Yeah. And so, that's going to change things around because we didn't, we've kind of done it the other way around. We created our zones, they've been tweaked a bit. But all this water and stuff came in after that. And so, we need to go back and flip it around and make sure those things match.
John, what was the last, what was the size of the last building you guys just put up?
One was 9,600 and one was 4,000. And this would be.
And those were in industrial parks?
Those are right in the same area. And I was going to do one more, like a 30, 3,000, 3,200 one. But I couldn't, you know, not do it for a year. That could, could be, it's very harmful. Like, if I told you, you can't, you know.
I'm retired. Yeah, but I can't do something for you for a year. Yeah, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
No pole frames or garden sheds and.
Other issues is you can call out, you know, certain type of data infrastructure, make it somewhat broad, you can, so it's tough in towns of the bond where you can't call out. I was thinking with fracking oil, I can't say no fracking right now, just divide truckway or something, although it's around, and just call up the streets of the towns trying to be, not today.
It's all use versus user too. We can't, we can't say, we don't want this kind of store. We can just set the parameters to like keep those kinds of stores abey until we get things going. And I think that's part of what this committee and the consultant need to discuss, is how can we get things moving such that we can open up more development over time? Because I don't want to have a long moratorium throughout the entire town. I want to open things up as quickly as we can. And given that, if we have a moratorium for a year, we are able to undo some of that with a subsequent law. And that's what I would like to be able to do, is after six or eight months, say, this is now allowed because we've put in place enough that we feel comfortable about allowing this kind of thing.
Joe, keep it, keep in mind that I, this is my opinion, that, that there's a lot, you know, Lansing is a desirable area for obviously all of us that live here. And one of the things that makes it desirable is the proximity to support services. So, most of us, you know, you can, if you want to go out to eat or go have a beer, you can go and in five, 10 minutes, you can be at one of the restaurants in the community. Or you need to go to the doctor, or the dentist, or see your attorney, you don't have to fight the traffic in downtown Etica, you can go there. So, having those support services, even the dollar store, if you need milk or bread or eggs, you know, you can run over to one of the dollar stores and be there in five minutes. And that's, that is desirable for the public, that the people that live here, in my opinion. You know, you ask anyone that lives in Newfield or Carolina or Dambie, and they want to go have dinner, and they got to drive a half hour, 45 minutes.
I, it, it's not the dollar stores per se, it's the business model of a disposable building that is, you know, they're, they're designed to put a bunch of stores out, let them run for a little while, and then consolidate after other things have been put out of business. And we end up with the white elephant. And I'm trying to avoid that kind of business model because that doesn't work for me.
Right.
And one of the zoning things that I would like us to do, especially along that corridor up and down the lake, is put in design guidelines that won't let you build a temporary disposable building. We want, you know, we want you, if you're going to put a dollar store in, put it in a real building that when you guys close, somebody else is going to want, not, it's going to be.
What we tried to do with the last two dollar stores, they're not just plain square concrete blocks that are plain.
I know you did. I want, I want to give you more tools.
Yeah, the town, the board, this planning board did that. We said, no, this has got to be more creative. It's got to blend in with the community and the neighborhood.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You're doing that already.
I know you are. I want to give you more tools to be able to do it stronger. Yeah, you did what you could with what we have in our zoning. Our zoning can require a higher level of building, so you don't even have to argue with them about it. It's like, no, we're not going to let you build a cinder block because it's in the zoning. You don't even have to ask us.
I'm assuming those, um, design criteria, we'll call them, and what you're looking for in each zone, like, you know, specific, like IR zones and ag zones and business zones, they actually, I've been doing some reading, and they've been talking about creating more neighborhoods than actual, like, zones. So, you take a business zone, and you want to be able to place supportive, walkable neighborhoods where people actually live, they are entertained, they work. And now, and Lansing's a large, you know, town where you do have a significant portion of agriculture in sort of down its edges. But, you know, in areas like this where you can support walkable, bikeable, you know, neighborhoods, it's actually a very interesting concept to be able to have design criteria for, say, a non-disposable building that allows you to have different sort of uses that are allowed within that, that micro neighborhood, you would call it, where, you know, you can support a livable, walkable, you know, family environment, even though you've got businesses along with residential and restaurants and.
So, you're, you look at doing things like mixed use, first of all. And then, I think the overlay addresses some of that too because it allows some of that development, but it doesn't allow a lot of that development.
Well, the overlay district, there's two different kinds that we're talking about. One are the environmental overlays. So, instead of trying to create zones that deal with some of our real steep slopes or some of our major rivers that are running through town, you just do an overlay and say, this takes an extra step because we, we don't want people doing stupid stuff on steep slopes. I've got that on Salmon Creek Road, where they cut a road so badly into their property that Mikey has to. where they cut a road so badly into their property that Mikey has to come and plow it every time there's a huge rainstorm because it just washes onto the road. So, we, we wanna be able to control that more. We wanna keep people from doing damaging stuff to the, you know, Salmon Creek and some of the other major rivers through. So, that's done with an overlay district. Then there's the Cuba Lake scenic byway, in which, right now, it runs through every single zone in the town. And, and you can do an overlay on that in which you both lift some restrictions and add some restrictions, depending on which zone you're talking about, so that you get a more cohesive look without having to zone that as a separate zone. And, and so you kind of, you know, look at it as a different way, and that's what we're talking about. I, I totally love the walkable communities, that's only gonna be possible in the most southern parts of the town. In order to get a real mixed-use business, you need thirty-five hundred people within a half-square mile, and that's a third of the town.
No, understood, I, we definitely have a, a big area, but it's definitely worth something, you know, to, to consider where those might exist in a, in a really workable form.
Yeah.
It's not gonna work for me out in North Lansing, you know, you know, in the ag area.
It's not even gonna work here, because we don't even have the, we don't have the infrastructure and aren't gonna get it to be able to create that kind of density, because the sewer got voted down, what was it, eight years ago, nine years ago, whenever it was? And since the school system went over to the new septic, that pot of money's gone, so I just don't see that happening. But we can still have design guidelines to basically say, we don't want disposable buildings, we want real buildings. If you're gonna build something, we want it for you and the next generation as well. And that's the kind of thing. It's, it's the changeover, most zoning one that first went in was Equilidian zoning, which focused on use. You could, you could have a restaurant here, you can have a factory here, you can have an office here. Form-based talks more about how does it look and how does it sit on the property. We don't really care if it's a Burger King or an office building, as long as it fits into the neighborhood, both traffic-wise and all that. And, you know, nobody's completely one or the other, and what the comprehensive plan suggested, I agree with, and it sounds like you do too, is to lean a little bit more over to form, to start saying, if you're gonna build, these are the kind of fences you can have, these are the kinds you can't have, this is the kind of siding you can have, this, these are the kinds you can't have, so that you guys don't have to argue with anybody about this. It's no longer, you know, no, you, we don't really want you to build it like that, can you build it more like this? The answer is done, it's in the zoning, they come to you already knowing that they have to build it this way. And, and that, that'll make your life easier because you won't have to push back on things that I hear you pushing back on people regularly.
I, I like, I like some of that, I think you can also go overboard a little bit, which we can talk about in the, you know, in the group. But you, you know, you can push it too much where, you know, you might not get anybody that really wants to come, but everything they gotta do is like, can't go too far too.
Oh, absolutely, if I start telling you what colors things, and, and some communities can and do. They tell you what color you can have, they can tell you exactly which siding, as opposed to, these are the ones we prefer, these are forbidden. And, and that's a balance that we're gonna have to find in the group, and in this group too, because I, I want this group to help feed back through the three of us, what are the things that you see people trying to put forward that we really don't want? And, you know, what are the things you're pushing back over and over again? Let's get that into the zoning so you don't have to do that pushback. You know, in theory, if we get our zoning exactly right, people come before you with a plan, you look at it, say, that's beautiful, and it moves on. Now, I know, it's never gonna be totally like that. But you want it more smooth, you want, you want developers to come in knowing what you want, knowing what they can do, and saying, we can do that, here's what we're planning. And, you know, the touches you will give is just kind of the community, hey, have you thought about this neighbor and this thing?
The only, the only thing I'm worried about is, if you look at other towns and other counties, Lansing is very restrictive currently if you compare to go anywhere around here. Like, we have very strict rules, regulations already, and if you're a business choosing between one or the other, I think we're gonna start losing a lot. I mean, we already do lose, but I think it'll just be harder.
What I'm hearing more is our zoning is confusing and hard to decipher.
Yeah, them too.
Yeah, it, it, it isn't laid out in a way that makes sense, it's self-contradictory.
But it shouldn't be, it doesn't necessarily have to be more restrictive.
It needs to be more restrictive in some areas and less restrictive in others, it depends on what.
I've been on this, what, about eighteen years, and, and most developers, and there's, there's been many cases where we had no legal to stand on, and we asked nicely and they complied, so I think this board has always been that way, you know, we asked nicely and most of the time, I think almost all the time, developers go, yeah, that makes sense, okay, all right, we'll go with that.
Yeah.
So, you don't, you don't need to, you know, have it, everything spelled out in a, you know, certain font.
We never will.
What's that?
We'll never have it all spelled out, Al, I know that.
You know what I'm saying.
I know, Joe.
You don't need to be too restrictive, is what I'm saying.
I was looking at getting a shed put up, like a tiny shed, and the guy goes, where do you live? I said, Lansing, he goes, oh, boy, they're the worst.
Yeah.
No, the town of Ithaca's still the worst.
He's the guy, he's the guy that deals with putting sheds up all over. And he's like, yeah, they're, they're zoning, they're codes, they got, I don't know, somebody said, I put sheds up all the time, thousands of them. Lansing's the one that gives me trouble.
Yeah, and when we, when we met with the business community, I've been talking to people, one of the biggest things is our code's hard to decipher. And I know there's parts that have contradicted each other, we've tried to clean up some of that, but we have cleaned up all of it. And there's things that we just don't discuss, and so you're like, you're not sure, you know, it's a tiny home, which is an issue that we really have to deal with, and we're going to. Our code doesn't really deal with that in a way that you can figure it out and say, well, can I fit in this way, or that way, or, you know, does it work if I can do this? We don't really, we don't deal with it enough that anyone can even work through it. And so we're not seeing much of it because people are having the reaction that you're having of, our, it's not that our code's too restrictive, our code just doesn't deal with it in a way that you can understand what you can do and what you can't.
And a lot of it's up for different interpretation.
Yeah.
Which you can argue both ways, but you're told, ah, you can't do that. But it's, it's not black and white, it's gray, so.
Yeah, and who wants to put a lot of money into gray? Yeah, am I gonna put a bunch of money into a sketch plan and come here and put in the application fees to discover that you think the gray is black and I thought it was white? And, you know, nobody wants to do that, and so people are gonna be, they're gonna, they're gonna reserve and say, no, because of fusion, not because of the over-restriction, because our, our code actually has been very unrestricted for most of the time that I've been around here. We tightened up the ag zone a lot, which basically actually do anything. But it was also badly written and hard to decipher, and, you know, had all the issues that we're trying to clean up with this major revision, which is why we're doing a major revision.
Different job, Eddie, word whether we gave you planner or planner applications?
Oh. I, I, I talked to John a couple of weeks ago, he said that he had applications that looked viable. They, they have to hit a certain point or he doesn't even see them, so he's gotten one or two, but he hasn't really reviewed them. Last I talked, and he's on vacation, as I think you guys know. So, I'm pushing for it, I really think we need that filled ASAP.
Yeah, I think the board definitely appreciates having, and Kelly's awesome with another planner appointment.
Um, but we also want, I, I wanna put two people in that position, I think that office is way overworked, and we need two people in. And I think you're seeing part of that tonight, in which the Peruville Road thing. Your staff should have been able to give you the background of, here's what you approved on this date, here's what you approved on this date, here's where we are now before this meeting, but we don't have enough staff in the office to be able to give you that prep work. And so, you guys are left going, oh, I'm not sure how to deal with this, because you don't have the information that you need to make your decision. And that's why I wanna get more staff in there, because I can feel it in this room, that you aren't giving the staff support, not because the staff's incompetent, the staff's working really hard, they just can't do sixty hours' worth of work in thirty hours, and I get that.
It's also not fair to, like Craig, just because John wasn't here, we couldn't make a decision one way or the other, it's not fair to him.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I agree.
There's time for legal stuff.
Yeah, it's gotta wait a month.
But, but, but if we had more staff, the staff would have more time to prep for this meeting, and so, you know, 'cause John, if he were here, might not have been able to answer those questions any better, you know, 'cause I've heard him say, I need to go look that up, I'm not sure. And I want most of that done before the meeting, you know, there'll always be exceptions, but if we don't give the staff enough staff to do the job well, stuff's not gonna get done.
Not enough time for strategic thinking, you're just trying to get the, the paperwork together just to present it, not really thinking strategically about, well, what kinds of questions will my board ask, and, you know, maybe I can cover those before, you know, as part of the presentation package.
Well, John Zepco really wants to spend more time looking at planning for the town as in planning, not as in reacting to developer proposals. And we need to have enough staff in there that developer proposals get enough attention that they can move through both from the developer's side and from your side, and for the community as a whole. And John has enough time to look at planning issues in general and say, hey, you know, we really should be thinking about this, it's an issue that's coming up and we need to, he doesn't have that time.
Makes the development process faster, for everyone.
Well, there's the development process, which we don't have enough staff to do, and there's the general planning process that's not getting done at all, and hasn't really gotten done in Lansing for a long time, which is why our zoning's so far behind, and there's things in it we should have been dealing with a long time ago, and I know Dean's been talking about tiny homes for at least eight years now. And the answer is, we don't have staff time to deal with it, is really what it's come down to.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's more straightforward if it's an ADU.
Yeah, but, but, you know, all that takes hours of sitting down, looking at how our zoning works right now, looking at ideas of how will we incorporate it to our zoning everywhere, some places, why this place is not that place, what are other towns doing, what's working, what's not, that all takes time. And if you're busy dealing with, you know, the eight developments that are coming forward, you don't have time for that visionary stuff. And we really need that visionary stuff as well. This board, five, six, seven years ago, used to spend one meeting on visionary and one meeting on dealing with developers, and visionary's dropped out completely, because there's just not enough staff time to support it. And that's not good for the town. And so, you know, I don't want to degrade the staff at all, I think they're doing a great job for the amount of work we're putting on them. And I really want another two people in that office, I wanna fill that one position, I wanna put another one in there as well. It's a question of can we afford it, and can we find the people who will do that job for us?
Back to the Peruville Road one, I think, didn't the town board have a public comment period? The public came in and made comments on, on that, on, on the, on the Schofield and Peruville Road a few months ago?
No, we don't, we don't.
One lady did.
So, oh, she came, she came in, Margot came in and used her privilege of the floor to talk about it, but that wasn't the town board asking.
Wasn't on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, anyway.
It was just one person that came in?
Yes, I remember, it was just Margot. She was the woman that I talked to at the beginning of the meeting, and I asked you, 'cause I thought that was the thing that was getting dropped off, and I wanted her to sit here for an hour and a half in this area.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I said to Lynn too. Okay, I just, I misunderstood, I thought there was somebody that said there was, comments were made to the town board about it. I was gonna say, if that was true, it should be forwarded on to us, you follow what I mean?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, she's, and, and I told her, you gotta talk to the planning board, I think she's already sent you a couple of things.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's basically the same stuff she was talking to the town board about. But yeah, the town board has no say over that particular project.
Well, that's a good example where some of the neighbors got together and put together a packet that you would expect that you would get from the planning department.
Yes. And, and you would have, were we not down a planner, and really ought to have another person in that office as well. But we'll see where that goes with the budget season, there's, it's gonna be a tight budget again. But we'll definitely hire the planner, that's, that's, there's no question about that, and I think he's got some applications he likes. But last time I talked to him, he hadn't really gone over them yet, he was still waiting to see what was coming in.
Good. Well, thanks for listening to us tonight.
Oh, sure, that's what I'm here for.
Taking our comments back to the board.
Any other thoughts or questions? I mean, y'all know how to reach me anyway, but.
Kelly, you probably want us to bring some of this back again next, next time, right, save the package?
Did you have to have a, a packet for me around somewhere? Did you have a packet for me around somewhere, by the way?
Is someone taking it?
Oh, it was, some, somebody grabbed it.
I thought you grabbed it, gave it to me to do the sign, the sign, the mail.
Nope, I looked and didn't see anything out there.
Don't move.